This is the City of Flint's City Council Meeting. Presented by Spectacle Productions, Determined to Make a Difference. And underwritten in part by Local 370 Flint, Michigan, United Association of Union of Plumbers, Pipe Fitters, Welders, and Service Techs. Pipe Fitters Union has entry-level conveyors available and available at 810-720-5243. The City of Flint, City Council Meeting. Up next.
report on any of this money that hit Flint actually came to us, Ms. Branch?
It's online. It's been online since day one. Taking action against Flint. It's been tracking. You can pull that spreadsheet down, paste it right anywhere you want.
You can't pull that spreadsheet down?
When I get... Yeah, that's on the state's website, right?
It's on the state's website.
Yeah.
Not this thing?
Well, it's basically a...
No. This isn't what I want.
Oh, okay.
I want in our books, okay? I want the line items of where this money went. Who got contracts? Who... Where this money went? Where it says Treasury? That reimbursed Flint or went to Flint or whatever? I want a separate report on all of the funding that actually hit our coffers. How that was spent? Who that money went to? And for what? And I would also like...
Point of information. President Winfrey, is it appropriate because Senator Ananek is before us today that maybe what's being discussed now been being done in our committee meetings on Wednesday?
Possibly, but I'm doing it now. Ms. Galloway, thank you. And I'll get back with Ms. Ananek in a moment.
I want to rule with you because this isn't the point of the meeting.
So, so, Councilwoman, you want... I think it is good if you use his time.
Right.
I think what you're asking is legitimate and it should be, but if it's something that you can do in committee meetings, we must bring it up. We have a question. I'll just say it.
Well, and you don't know how that question is then going to lead to a question for the Senator. But...
But we're gonna do this, please.
Okay. After your question, I'll do another different meeting. Okay? And next time, please, when you ask a question, I'll decide whether it's important or not.
Please?
Okay. All right. So, I'm going to let Senator Ananek use his time to give us some information we don't have. And I want to say this information is extremely valuable. Thank you.
Well, Councilwoman, I don't think you have a question. I want you to go ahead and do that.
Oh, I'll call Senator Ananek privately.
Then, Councilwoman, go ahead.
Thank you very much.
So, I'm concerned with the $6 million that costs $2 million per month.
Well, from what I understand, that's where I saw...
So, that's three months of bottled waters. Would it be more beneficial instead of bottled waters that we do Hill House filters instead?
You know, I'll say that I have had some serious disagreements with the Governor's Office about some of the dollars incoming, how they were spending it, specifically some of the dollars. So, the question was about related to the efficiency of using it for bottled water versus home house filters or other programs. And I promise you, this is not me passing the buck, but I, as an adamant opponent of Public Act 436 and a believer in Home Rule, I really think those decisions should be made by people in this room. I will advocate for resources if I agree with you, and in most cases, I don't think I've ever turned you guys down for trying to get something that you may or may not, that you believe you may need. You know, there are home house filters, that's a program. You know, there's the regular filters, there's other aspects you may want to, you know, try to go for. I think those are something that you guys should decide. I don't necessarily think any of those would be, I don't think they're disqualifiable expenses if there's something that you think would be in agreement. You'd have to get the administration, and when I say administration, I'm sorry, administration, the Governor's Administration to agree to it, and they wouldn't even present a request. But I think those are all legitimate things to be going for. And I, to the point earlier about city dollars and to your point, I still think that most people have a complete lack of understanding of how the credits were distributed, and I'm sure it was something the city had trouble distinguishing because it was 60... 65% or 47% of the bill. If that's not, if that's not the administration trying, the Governor's Office trying to find some crazy way not to give us what we deserve, I don't know what is. But it's one of the reasons why so little of that money, it is important to note, so little of the money actually came to the city. And they harmed the citizens physically, but they also harmed our city. And they harmed our school system, and they harmed our community colleges. And you can talk to people all over the city that were harmed in some way with their business. You know, I will say this too. This is not related to this, but it's important. Last week, and I'm saying this because I think we're all in agreement here, nine people, the elevated blood level program, and it had nine new people that had elevated blood levels in children. I'm not suggesting that it was all water or whatever, but if we know that they're still seeing an increase in people having to come in, that there's still a problem. And it's also important to note that the Genesee Medical Society and the Genesee Health Department have not lifted their health advisory. I just want to make sure, as a resident, as a person who, Madam Vice President's constituent, I want you to know I agree with you that the Governor said he would stay until the, he said the water would stay until the pipes are replaced. That was not, we didn't say that. He said that. So, that's important to know. I mean, whatever kind of stuff they want to say to get out of that responsibility, that's not what they said. I'm sorry. I just had to say that because I'm in front of you and I'm as angry as you are that they've done this.
Yes. Well, I think we should look into something other than what we're currently doing because that money gets drained pretty quickly. So, hopefully, in our committee meetings, we can explore that option. And also, I'm glad you're here because I wanted to have this conversation a little bit.
Sure.
About water affordability. And if you can have some help for your end, and just to explain a little bit for those who don't know, Flint's water rates are at least triple if not...
Point of information.
Well, I have a point for it. I have a point.
Wait, wait, wait. I've got to deal with the point now. Let's don't be out of order.
Okay. So, point of information, again, that is a very important thing, but it takes us away from the scope of Senator Ananek's testimony, which is now... And that's okay.
Well, it's okay to disagree. I've got to make a ruling on it because what we are supposedly meaning with important is lifted.
Correct.
And so, I'm going to rule that it is. It is important, but look at your sheet. It tells us...
I'm gonna, I'm just gonna, I'll continue, and I will tell you exactly why it relates to why he's here. I'm sorry, but I think it's... Now, you've only done Kate Fields' meeting. This is important. If our water was affordable and not three to four times the rate of anywhere else in the nation, we might be able to buy our own bottled water rather than, now we're paying three times the price of water, and we have to buy water to drink. So, we're paying a lot. That was my point.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I just... It was relevant.
No, no, I will say this. You know, we're on a, someone's saying that we used to say, my name's Paul, and that's between y'all, but... You just, I'll answer any question you guys say is okay. No, but let me, I can get you just a quick answer to get to the point and make sure you stay on task. We have introduced some bills that do water affordability there. The city, as you all know, is limited in the way that you, the way that the state allows. Certain ways you can bill water. And there's other states that have done things in a more creative way that make sure that people don't lose access to their water. Philadelphia's doing some things, and we're looking at, potentially we're looking at, I've introduced some bills. I'll make sure I get you copies of those.
Where you looking at?
Yeah. Because I think there's, I think, this is not a problem, this is not a problem that's created recently, it's been going on for some time.
You'll come back.
But I'll make sure I get you as much information as possible.
Councilwoman Galloway.
And I just want to say respectfully to my colleagues, I think everything that's been mentioned is very important. And it's unfortunate that Senator Ananek, this is only the first meeting. And it's like I heard my grandmother say, "You, babe, you can't fit everything in at the same time." And so, I do agree with that. This is only the first of one. And so, Senator Ananek, but with that, I wanted to ask a specific question about, are we gonna get information on that $9 million? And was this fund supposed to be allocated for a lead service line?
Well, you know, they, I will say this, it was unencumbered, and they would use it for whatever they needed to. Because the problem is, and I recognize, you know, when they first started doing the appropriations, that we don't know exactly what's going on, right? And there's been lawsuits, and some of those things have required things to happen in a certain way. So, it was unencumbered for purpose, and it could be used a number of ways. I can probably find out who made that request. It may just have came from the Governor's Office. I don't know. There's no way to tell if it came, it'd be hard to say other than that because they would have made that request.
And then, my last question on this is, if these funds were allocated for water pipe, I mean, water pods per se, and there is still $6 million, why would anyone deny us if this is what this money has been used for? And again, like you said, now, I'll say, Senator Ananek, I've never met with Governor Snyder, but I can tell you that I knew that the water pods were closing in March. So, it wasn't a surprise to me. Been trying to tell as many people as I can. And so, I'm disappointed that the belief has been, we just got this three days after we got Home Rule. But I don't, I'm just saying that for the record, I knew, never been in one meeting, and so, it was three weeks later. And so, my, but the question is, why if we choose to, and these funds have been used for that, if it makes this community feel good, even if it's only for another three months, because they weren't properly prepared to not have exposure to that water, why would someone deny us?
You know...
And that's my last question.
That's an important question, but you're asking me to speak to motive on what their, what his reasoning was. You know, I think it speaks to the way they handled this crisis from the beginning. You know, I mean, they've, it's taken a different approach than a public health crisis. It's been more of trying to solve the terrible, terrible mistake they did through the public relations, maybe through the politics of it. And I think you guys, I think we've, as a community, stepped up much more than the state has. And, you know, I fought to make sure that a lot of these dollars went to programs and it would work, but I also wanted a lot, I mean, they broke the city. I wanted them to, I wanted resources to come here. We got some, you know, through the way that they did it, but not as much as I think needed to be happening.
I think a lot of motivation comes from the settlements. So, we just had another settlement agreement on assessing all the children in Flint. So, I don't think the Budget Office would admit this, but I think they want to be able to cover the things that they're legally required to cover. And I'm not defending that. I think it will come out as wrong money, but I think that motivates people.
Councilman Davis, you had your hand up.
Yes.
Can I get you just for one minute? I recognize you.
Okay.
Could I get you to, you're the Councilman, maybe for a minute?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Davis, President. Look, we've got the new economic development lead in the room. Eva, when we get in committee meeting, I've already said something. We know bottled water is temporary. People laugh and do what they want, but I'm proposing we have our own bottled water factory, and we put it together in bottled water. They trust that bottle of water because it ain't went through that corroded infrastructure. So, if we doing something of that nature, I'm eager to bring them in and discuss solutions. And Ms. Galloway, I'm not proposing we use this $6 million for three months. I'm proposing that we have to rub pool it out from under us in three days. After Mr. Davis speaks, I think the council should hear what President Winfrey has to say. So, I just wanted to throw that caveat in. We know about the whole house filters, but they giving us the other filter, and it was their money. We don't have the money. We've got an Economic Development Director as a team. If we decide that Senator Ananek, he want to help us pool it from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and work with the Regional Chamber, build a bottled water factory where people trust that bottle of water that ain't went through that corroded infrastructure, we'll talk about that. But I just wanted to say that we gonna get you out of here on time.
Councilman Davis, thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Ananek, I got a question.
Sure.
When it closed the pods, it caused a lot of discord in our community. And I can see the dissension coming back, and respectfully, it should because people frustrated. But by you being in the state, what would be your recommendation that would keep us focused where we need to be focused with the administration as well as this body working together in an effective way to get results? And we know that what's been done to us is wrong. We all know that. But what would be a good way for us to move in unison instead of in division? Because now, we just started to pull us apart again.
Sure.
You got any recommendations?
Point of information.
What's your point?
Have Senator Ananek heard any reports back from any meeting with the mayor and the governor?
I spoke to some of them.
Okay.
But I, but you can, I mean, obviously, I don't know if any of you have, you know your input better than I do. When I'm done, I don't know if you guys could...
Yeah, we don't...
I don't make sure I answer the question.
We don't dare.
For sure anyone else is too. So, this is my opinion. I think, and anytime we're divided, they're gonna use that against us, right? So, I think what I would do in your committee process is you'd have, you know, a number of things. You'd have a new economic development team, figure out projects you want to see going after, come together and agree on that. And I can help, you know, as I will, my colleagues in the State House, going for the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, other things like that. Figure out exactly what you want to do when it comes to the water issue, whether it's we try to raise private dollars. I'm gonna still try to raise private dollars. People need to have bottled water, right? And we have to figure something out in an official way, but we got to make sure we have people access to some form of bottled water. So, you know, I'm gonna work on that. I know many people in this room will. But decide what kind of requests you want to be made, if any. And then, you know, sort of as a group, figure that out with the administration. And I think do that with every area. You know, if there's something that you think, you know, there are limited amounts, there are distressed cities, grants, and things of that nature that can be applied for. And in the past, we've gotten those. Look at, comb through the books as you're going through your, I know, it's middle of April, so you're going through your, you're going through your budget process now. If there's anything you want me to request, I'd work with the administration and your council leadership on what that may be. You don't want to bake that into your budget, of course, but there's things, whether it's drinking water revolving loan funds or whatever, that we haven't received yet. Be more than happy to try to advocate for those. But I think, you know, kind of to say, you know, whenever you can, realize that there are different, there's different ways to approach this, and I don't think any of them are necessarily wrong, right? There's different, right? Whether it's home house filters or bottled water or trying to do something from an economic development perspective, just figure out exactly how much road you want to go, and I think that's probably the best way.
We've got, we've got, people, we all want to do this. We've got about seven minutes. Councilwoman Fields, Councilwoman Wurden, and then Lieutenant Black, Councilman Mayers, and other council people have questions. You want us to do the...
Point of order. With seven minutes, and I know how I talk, and I know some of my colleagues, with seven minutes, I would ask that the colleagues allow Ms. President Winfrey to shed some light on the meeting that you went to today, which I thanked the mayor and the governor. And I want Senator Ananek to hear this, and then we drop the gift to that. And then finally, this last tidbit on the order, and I think we've been and done what we choose to do, and we'll have continuing to.
Sure.
Then I will do so. This morning, the mayor and her staff, Mr. Gilchrist, Dr. Pugh, and myself, and, you know, Mr. Miller, met with the governor and some of his staff. And the purpose of the meeting was to talk about a comprehensive way to use dollars, including the water pod and some other things. The governor did not want to hear about the water pod. In fact, I was very upset with how it seemed that we were somewhat rushed out of the meeting because there's someone kept coming to the door, giving him an indication that it's about trying to wrap it up. And there were, it was good exchange, but to no avail as far as the water pod is concerned. And I think the governor specifically said that we could come back, and we wanted to talk about economic development. It was, Mr. Gilchrist and the mayor and Dr. Pugh were vehemently, well, let me back that, same people were strongly advocating for water pods and others, and what the governor just didn't want to hear. In fact, I think, Mr. Gilchrist, could you, could you tell exactly what he said?
Ma'am?
What's your point?
No. I would like to stay with this order. Do you know whether or not he shared, like, whether or not he see that $6 million used for something?
Well, I think, I think he said that $6 million, the 4.1 million of it should be used, I believe, for something that dealt with the Board of Education. I believe it was somehow, it may have been a lawsuit or something like that.
There was a settlement that was happening this week or last week related to special education access and assessing the students, is that right?
Is that, is that how you remember that, Mr. Gilchrist?
Yes.
Okay. So, it was, it was, to me, it was, it was not, it was not a fruitful meeting. I thought there was a good faith effort on the administration to set that meeting and to go down and to try to talk about this and to get them to see through the lens of the folks here.
Yeah.
But he just wasn't, he just wasn't here.
Yeah. And you know, we spoke, I spoke to the administration ahead of time, and I know they came in, you know, talking to you, came in with a well-reasoned, logical way forward.
Correct.
And that's the response that we gave. So, thank you.
Can I ask my question?
You should.
Okay. You asked if there was something else. I wanted to ask you, you know, we had our drinking water revolving loan fund forgiven for 4.5 million. Okay? The state forgave that. We have a problem now. Number one, how much does the legislature have clout have in terms of getting our wind plan approved because we put in another wind plan? Part of what we want is we desperately need new water meters.
Yeah.
And we're being told that that's not infrastructure and it's not eligible. So, we're having this battle going on. I don't know if there's anything new on that. But can a drinking water, the revolving loan fund, can we create a new one and maybe get that forgiven too and use it for some additional things that we need?
Well, they can do upfront drinking water revolving loan fund. They can say that they're gonna forgive it on the front end. I can check into that. And I, I mean, just as a personal side, that I have to call my water, my water meters don't work, so I have to call in like a lot of people do. So, I know it's a problem, right? These are old water things. I don't know, I don't know when they purchased them, but it was long before I was on council. So, we don't have any direct authority over when they approve or when, if they do approve a wind project. I can inquire and suggest that I'd like them to give you a, and the longer they wait, the more that federal dollars are just sitting there. So, if you guys have put a plan in place that you guys have all kind of sent down together, I can, I'll definitely...
Well, perhaps our CFO could communicate with you on those issues. I'm just trying to think as we have you here, how can we get some additional funding?
What's your point, Phil?
I agree. Get to the last, but then I had a minute, about two minutes to three. She said with some other colleague.
Yeah. It was Councilwoman Wurden that had a question.
She done?
I done.
Um, for some of these, the monies in here, it seems like we already have it in our budget, like double upbox, food things, MD backpack program. I mean, is he saying that he used it for Flint water, and it's already been budgeted to use for that? Like...
No, no. We didn't, we had, some of these programs existed, but they didn't have access to enough people. So, they would, a lot of these programs, we just expanded because they were already in place. And we knew that, you know, we knew that nutrition, once you've been exposed to that, it's not a good thing, it's a terrible thing. But there are some things that can at least help remediate some of the problem. And some of those, some of those things include nutrition programs, early education programs, there was some money that went to the VAAA to handle, you know, senior citizens. If you're in that middle area, if you're just a person who's not a child or an adult, there wasn't a lot available. We pushed for some things, but we weren't able to get as much. But, so, what we did was we were able to expand programs so that we'd have access for almost everyone, right? Like Medicaid expansion, if you're under, if you were in utero or up to like 21, you know, people should get expanded Medicaid, there'd be no COCs and things like that. There were some of the programs. So, some of them weren't new programs, they just expanded the access and eligibility. Sometimes they took away the income eligibility requirements. But there was a $30 summer program for the EBT card, summer EBT card. Everyone got that. You should have just scanned people's homes, and it had $30 on it, right? If you had kids, everyone with a kid had that program. So, some of these programs weren't new, they weren't necessarily created. Some of them were created, some of them were expanded, and some of them were just funded in a different way.
Mr. President.
Councilman Davis.
Ms. Wurden, where are you?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. President, on page two of this letter, and or, I'm gonna call it resolution, where the emergency manager ordered this repealed. Senator Ananek, this is the letter, I'm gonna give it to you, but it's copied. The colleagues, got it? Everybody got it? Has it been passed out? Have y'all got it?
No.
Okay. I thank to Neil brought it in. Do anybody see? Yeah, page two, right here, it says that that it be recommended to the state treasury that all Flint emergency managers order here to, or not repeal, and that remain in effect on the effective date of this resolution be prospectively repealed as of the effective date of this resolution. That looks like a period. Then it says, "All actions taken by city officials, the board, or both pursuant to a Flint emergency manager order while it was in effect remain valid after it's repealed to the same extent as if the Flint emergency manager order remained in effect." Maybe you and your legal guy. All we want is a quick interpretation. If it's been repealed, but the actions remain in effect, what we want to know from y'all on your capacity, everything is repealed. I'm sure that's the intent. But what remains in effect is the part that's kind of screwing me up because if you repeal something, we don't want it to remain in effect. It should not have to remain in effect. So, that's the question.
Yeah.
And if Senator Ananek, I'm so glad that you was here on page two. I'm glad you was here. And we apologize for getting you out of here three minutes late. Now that we've been on time and we've met our schedule, I always want to be respectful to the mayor's administration, Mr. Gilchrist, Mr. Miller, Mr. Branch, the city attorney, Angela Wheeler, and finance director, Mr. Newsom. Is there anything that they would like to ask, communicate, or exchange before we ask him to be dismissed? Or if there's anything you would like to say or exchange with the administration? I would say, Mr. President, if I can say it, this would be the time. Administration, Mr. Branch, the administrator, Mr. Gilchrist, finance director, any questions? Ms. Legal Department, any questions, any comments? Anybody? I just ask you...
He just...
What are you talking? Relax, Ms. Miller. So, if it's not Mr. Ananek, anything else?
No, I, we'll look into that, and then we'll probably get an official legal opinion. There's probably some process for that, whether it's the Attorney General or...
May I ask President Winfrey?
We can, we can get our understanding of what that means, and then we can make sure it's backed up.
Councilwoman Wurden.
And just for the record, Senator Ananek, if you could forward that, because I've been told by the AGs that the only way that we can get an interpretation is through our state legislature.
Okay.
So, if you will present that to him in what type of formal...
Yeah.
...way that would be great?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Ananek, anytime after this, it's on you.
Okay. Okay, no, thank you, please, the number of you on a regular basis.
We don't wanna run y'all.
No, no, it's fine, thank you.
Will you come back again?
Of course I will, yeah, yeah, it's my pleasure.
I believe, and you always answer my phone.
Yes, I try to, thank you, thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, so much.
All right, I have to pick up the kids, that covers everything, no offense.
We're gonna ask the public not to go, because once we, uh, once we kind of do our round robin here, uh, then we're gonna hear from the community, because this is a special city council room, we're gonna hear what, hear your comments as well.
Mr. President. Yeah, I would ask that this discussion matter be, uh, brought up in finance committee meeting, and Fields, you have no objection to some of this discussion about money being on the finance committee? And I would make to refer that to discussion about the finance party on the agenda for finance, and then I want some discussion as to these matters on government of powers, and for, and legislators. And I might as well put it on grants as well. I want the full court press on this discussion about this, um, money as it relates to. Mr. Gilchrist passed out a, um, press release, did y'all get that? And I've heard with Mr. Winfrey, excuse me, this is gonna be important. I don't play when it come to these folks hollering about this bottle of water and what they trust, you know? I had a, a, a mother with, um, compromised immune system and respiratory, uh, problems. I didn't do an autopsy, but that's been some of the symptom, and she died. So I take this seriously, I'm not grandstanding, don't care about no camera, don't care about folks in and out, and I ain't grandstanding. You can see now, in my opinion, had removed that two million, and put the governor in a bind, from what I'm hearing Mr. Winfrey say, four million maybe for some losses. Now, if the governor or anybody else wanna fight a two million dollar allocation, and I'm gonna get to the bottom of this stuff, I'm gonna be reading the heck out of this stuff at home, and I'm gonna see where all this money done went. And if you can backfill nine million for lead service lines after eight E time, get that wind money, and then put the nine million back. But I think it's a coincidence that President Winfrey and the mayor named him four point one million. Because when you subtract four point one million from six point one million, what you get? Two million, that mean the Lord moves in mysterious ways, Mr. Newsom. And I say, you subtract four million from four point one million from six point one million, you get two million. Plus, we got senators and others who will work on allocations of money. And remember, the finance director said that that money, I was talking about wasn't gonna be spent per se to two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Now, if they wanna block and talk about proposals that I submit, when I submit them for this community, then that's what's gonna happen in the budget year. I'm not just a finance man, I'm a politician, and I was, I, I'm highly pissed politically when I'm trying to do something for the community in a strategic way, financially and politically, and people robbing and calling and blocking. Talk to me, call me, and my phone ain't run in seven days from certain folks in the administration that I feel should have been discussing the proposal. I got a problem with that, I went to Mr. Newsom right after the meeting, I talked to Ms. Wheeler on the phone, I seen Mr. Branch coming in the parking garage, and so I done did my reach out. But if I'm an ally of the mayor and her administration, communication go both ways. It goes both ways. And so this discussion was very important, I appreciate the opportunity for President Winfrey to go on our behalf. Sometime they can take two, I figured it had to you and or Santino Durri, but it was Mr. Winfrey. And to this day, a week later, last Monday, on a proposal I call myself sponsoring, to temporarily keep some pots open, and then in the long term, deal with a bottle of water factory, my phone ain't run yet. I think I'm just as important as the governor in some sense, he was born in nineteen fifty-eight. Guess where y'all was born, nineteen fifty-eight? He was born in August of fifty-eight, guess where y'all was born, September fifty-eight? So if we gonna truly be a team, and you sponsor something, Mr. Davis, or you sponsor something, Ms. Galloway, I expect my phone to ring. Call me in a meeting, discuss it. Now, let's see what happens here. I'm gonna read this press release, I appreciate Mr. Gilchrist passing it out to me, through you, Mr. President. Was this just a press release or a press conference, Mr.? There was a press conference, what time was that press conference? And why was it held? And it was held in the lobby or in the conference room? Okay, I hadn't heard nothing about it, but I don't look at emails, so that could have been my fault. I don't look at emails, I take old school phone calls, and then you can put stuff in my mailbox. So I read it, I look at the news, with my cable on and my bill paid, I, I, I record all of it, right now my cable off. You know how much we make a year, nineteen thousand a year, is that the poverty level?
Below.
It's below the poverty level, and I took the vibe from GM and get four thousand partial pension. So I'm at twenty-three thousand, is that above or below the poverty level? And so I love doing my job, I love doing my job, and I like to think I do it well. And so I think council, or three or four or two members of council, or five or nine, should be full time with staff and pay, just like Jim Ananek. And so, Mr. Newsom, I'm here to tell you, I'm gonna introduce board accounts, I'm gonna talk about council pay, I'm gonna even, Ms. Galloway, talk about attendance requirement.
Can we get it down?
I'm gonna talk, but you can get asked out. You can get asked out, I take this seriously, but I know you wasn't trying to be funny, Mr. Talladega. And Mr. Winfrey, I really appreciate you in the meeting last week, when that guy on the front row was fixing the act a certain way. I be watching the House of Prayer case, just like you just said, do you get dental? This is a serious meet, we friends your birthday on the same day as mine, September the sixteenth. You sixty-one, I forget, but my, my, my point is that, when there's a meeting going on, we want y'all to respect us just as you respect the governor there. I ain't gonna say the legislature, 'cause some folks went up there and turned it out. They had to recess, but when they recessed, them state troopers came in, and it could have been more. So I'm all for civil disobedience protest, I was an activist before I was a council. I was an activist before I was a UAW committee person and recording secretary. But I'm gonna end by saying this, because I'm long-winded, but when I go long-winded, you gonna catch the total drift of my spirit. You done caught my feelings about this initiative to keep the bottle of water pots open, particularly in reference to what councilperson Winfrey described about the meeting with the governor. You done caught my drift about people not communicating with me in a timely manner. And some folks caught my drift about my political maneuvers being challenged. My political maneuvers are my political maneuvers, and I think they're full grown. I wasn't gonna sit there, Ms. Winfrey Carter, and allow the newspaper to say the council voted something down. I heard Mr. Griggs voting negative, it wasn't the five people there. I heard something from Mr. Davis, I wasn't feeling, 'cause he had been called in the room, and I propose, and you can ask me now, through you, Mr. President, Mr. Davis, you were talking to the mayor? Or Mr. Gilchrist or somebody?
All of the above.
All of the above, we did the same thing when we created that policy as it relates to the water. I think me and Mr. Santino did, but anyway, Mr. Winfrey, I would yield, but I walked out, because I know headlines. You might call it, I think it was a certain, and you might have recalled it, I've heard from folks, you might have, but anyway, I want you to stand strong, 'cause you round a cussing council, I will cuss, but I don't mean no harm. I could still go to heaven, I think a cusser can go to heaven, but anyway, I wouldn't yield to it. Well, I mean, we gonna find out, I don't wanna burn it down for the rest of my life. We gonna find out, Lord, we gonna find out, see the councilman who cuss go to heaven.
And then, and then after that, we're gonna hear from Mr. Newsom.
Yeah, I wanna respond to Councilman Maze, because, you know, Councilman Maze, everybody know how big your heart is, but everybody know my reason a little different too, and I'm the kind of stand-up type of guy, 'cause I do the podcast, and I do a lot of transparency in this podcast, if it ain't for me, but check it out. And, um, as you equate, everybody got a different personality. But one thing about me, when I go to heart with somebody, I go to heart with it, and I'm only good is my word. I say that, say this about the administration, I say it over and over again, you get titled different names because you have to try to line up, and the purpose of me sitting in this seat, to keep us on one accord, and us being council and administration. We have, I say it all the time, on record, we have the best administration, period. For some reason, the past history has lingered over into this new administration, which I'm a part of. I'm used to moving people forward as hurting, so, Mr. Maze, when I'm in the back, whether it be the mayor, Mr. Newsom, or, or Legal, Ms. Wheeler, it's always, I'm asking question, 'cause everybody got the same purpose. Mr. Ananek just explained it, people frustrated, and they hurting, and we all on the same page, but we got different ways of approaching. I was very frustrated this weekend, how all the work the administration done, including the economic development, getting thrown out the window, when we all, nobody in this building, or in this city wanted what happened. But all of a sudden, discord came. Mr. Ma- uh, Maze, the way you advocate for everybody, especially on our side of town, and the way people look up to you, it's imperative that you know, it ain't always we gonna agree, and because we don't agree, don't mean we should never ever fall out. Ain't nothing you can call me, ever gonna make me change how I feel about you, period, check the podcast. But I will always speak truth, when I'm out of order, I need somebody to tell me I'm out of order. The administration in order, whether they agree with me or not, I don't agree with them, but it's a right way and a wrong way to do anything. So, Mr. Maze, I'm just saying this to you, as men to men, we gotta learn to respect each other, because ain't nobody in this city care more about the city than you, ain't nobody at this council got more knowledge of council than you, and it's, it's, ain't nobody gonna argue that fact. But I will say this, with this crisis still lingering, and people, as he stated, still infected with lead, we ain't got time to play, we can't afford division another second. So we need to know, the administration is always trying to line up to us, but we got to get the, the checking balances, I'm gonna say it again, one time, is not, we check and balance the administration, we check and balance for the people that put us in this chair with the administration, because that's the only way we gonna pull out of this ditch, and that's where I stand. But once again, nobody have more heart for the city than you, Mr. Maze.
May I, I yield a point of order, may I yield, respond to him? You asking me to further yield?
Yeah, please, you have the councilwoman, then we'll come back, because I want to.
I want to respond to you.
Okay, can we, can we just hear what? If you don't, you don't, I can't make it.
I wanna hear what Ms. Galloway gotta say, but I wanna respond to Mr. Davis. I yield, 'cause I want to hear what you have to say, I'm not the, I don't claim to be the smartest, and I don't claim to have a biggest heart. I know I can act foolish and fuss and cuss sometime, but I got respect for you. I got respect for everybody on this council and in this room. And I won't lose respect for folks, I just know what their politics is, and then I, I go with the flow. So I don't think personally, you know, I just think politically, we differ. My movement is gonna be with the populace, the majority of the people, with the long lines I've seen at the pots, and with the number of calls that I got, and it might only been eight, nine, or ten, but it wasn't just the four pots. You had deliveries that went along with them pots to handicapping, air delivery, people who just was poor. So I was looking at the people more so than the council and the administration. I'm, I'm elected by people, and regardless of what they understand or don't trust, I proposed a Scott stopgap measure that I thought could help the people and the mayor's administration. People bought that, and all I say to the mayor, you, and others, if I'm proposing something, give me the political courtesy of talking to me. I'll call a ten, fifteen, twenty-minute recess, if you had to come out and say, Maze, this is what they telling me, I need to talk to you, and can we call a recess? I think we could have passed the recess with the five of us who was there, and then talk. So that's all I'm saying, I don't, you don't always have to agree with me, I don't always have to agree with you, Attorney Wheeler, Mr. Newsom, and nobody, I don't always have to agree with the mayor. But I'm gonna try to gauge and agree with the majority of the people of what's best for this community. So that's all I wanted to respond, and I appreciate you allowing me to do that, 'cause I wanted to respond while it was hot. And you know, I used to have the Eric Maze Show, you loved about the pot, the show. If I come back out with the Eric Maze Show, I thought it was one of the hottest shows on Channel Seventeen. Now I think the council meeting is, you know how many people tell me they watch the council meeting? Mr. President, thank you, and I now don't yield, I give up the flow.
I just wanted to say, um, just to my colleagues, I too have heard, um, the residue of the old council. I am disappointed in that verbiage, and until this council decides that they're not going to take on the spirit of someone prophesying over you, 'cause that's what it is, and I called in to the radio station to ask for clarification, because the other, the, the previous council was a council that was deemed that didn't work with the administration. I think it's unhealthy for this council to not take on the, the fact that we've worked better with each other than, um, most have seen in a long time, but to, again, identify what is the spirit of the old council, 'cause it doesn't change, and so all I'm saying is, it's healthy to have respectful debate. It's, it's important to understand that the mayor represents the entire city, and the nine of us represent a section of the city. And sometimes the section of the city that we represent is going to dictate how we support and/or not a different scenario. And, and, and so I just want that spirit of tearing down this council to end, and that we would really become our own group of nine new individuals. Um, and, and respectfully, look, I'm respecting, don't, I didn't shake my hand on nobody else, I just wanna say, I, I just wanna say that, that even, I, I, with Councilman Maze, I can respect his proposal, because the proposal was based on the scare of this community, and although it may not have been a great long-term, the thought short-term, and I'll say it again, the water pots closing in March didn't just come up the day the Governor Snyder said it, it's been known, it's been, it, it's been known, Governor Snyder, you know, he didn't make that up. In January, I asked the lady that delivers in my church, I said, look, can you just make the statement that there's the possibility that these pots will be closing in March? Why? Because people respond differently when they've been told something. So even if it's not the case, they prepared their hearts, they prepared their minds, they prepared their children. And when you don't do that, you ineffectively, um, make this community, like we did, I looked at some of the cars, you guys seen it? Some of those cars stood in line for hours, and if they identified how much they made on an hourly basis on their job, they wasted more money sitting in the line to get eight cases of water. But when you are in anguish, and when you are in fear, that something is being ripped away from you, you respond out of that fear, and so all I'm saying is, as a, as a community of leaders, that we would come on one accord, and we would begin to help move this community into the health and well-being that they need. And I'm not gonna one more day take on the spirit of lies that this is the old council. If, if you said that five being removed changed it, then let it be changed, but if disagreement between two- But if disagreement between two bodies healthily is deemed that way, then we got a problem with government. I'm just saying, and it's not you. I'm talking about the people that have said it. We've done better in the last six months since we've been a council than we've seen in a long time. And so, either we gonna keep the momentum going or we gonna live in that shadow of what other people are saying about us. Thank you.
I done voted and supported stuff on this council this second round that I didn't always agree with. But I voted, I supported the administration, whether it was appointments, whether it's the thirty-year deal, I did. And this stuff we done talked about in closed-door mediation that we can't even talk about publicly. So, when I have a different of opinion with the mayor, I think Angela and I talked about this and she cautioned me. But I already know it. I can have a disagreement and don't vote with you or anybody else and we move forward. I look at my scorecard. My scorecard might be six to one. And this is the one. And when I hear folks on the radio, whether it's Dumas, Oomas, Overton, Moverton, Moverton, Flynn, Flynn, Jen, whether it's whoever, whether it's Maurice, Davis, Avis, whoever, let them do it. That's politics at its best. Whether it's an activist, whether it's Tony Palladino, Tony Mallorino, whoever. It could be Kate Fields, Kate Mills, whoever. You ain't gonna get away from that. But when the people I support don't call and talk to me, the people I work with on this council don't call and talk, I'm suspicious. Well, what am I suspicious of? Everybody wanna be political. Everybody like the cameras. I like the cameras. But I didn't gonna chase them all the time. You know how long I've been on TV? Remember, I tell you, I had the amazing show. So, that's what I'm saying. And this word is, don't be confused. What we saying is this. There was a lot of talk, I can't say, in the white community. But in the black community, oh, they back to normal. They ain't agreeing, the mayor and the council. There are people gonna say something like that about me, cause I agree or don't disagree. They ain't seen nothing yet. They ain't seen nothing yet. So, my position is, we better be careful what we say, do, and don't do. Because that's where we caused the problem. The council in the past was just a five to four different majority. I think this council now is a five to four or five to three different majority. And it'll fluctuate on any vote. It can fluctuate. You can see me vote the same as Ms. Fields and everybody in the city know. I ain't philosophically, philosophically and politically insane. You see her vote with me and she might not philosophically be insane. I might not agree with other voters. So, all I'm saying is, whoever puts it out there, call them political snipers. They trying to divide and conquer. They can divide and conquer y'all or the administration. But they won't divide and conquer me. See, I'm set for four years unless I mess it up. I ain't got no election. The mayor got an election next year. When I'm in an election, I'm paranoid. I don't trust nobody. But a man didn't trust me, I help him get elected, re-elected. And I done ran for mayor the last three, four times and can play a role. So, I'll give them some sensitivity if they politically, as they try to do, uh, going into their election. Cause when I got one, I'm paranoid. I want everything right. But send the message to them. Send the message to them. Angela, Newsom, is y'all ready to sleep? Cause this is a council meeting. And it's some po- politics that's important. And you better know the politics getting appointed. If it ain't for the politicians getting these situations, appointees don't even be here. It'd be different appointees. So, everything I'm saying, Mr. President, you have been a fair president for the most part. Now, you done had some bad moves. I'll give you eighty, ninety percent good, but you, you done had some little political maneuver, cause you like for everybody to get along. It ain't gonna happen. You gonna have Democrats and Republicans. I'm done.
Uh, Mr. Newsom?
I'm done. That what he say, my friend. I'm done. I'm done. But it needs to be said.
Given the, um, the, uh, the business of the last few days, I think that it is important for the city, when I say the city, I mean administration and council to be on the same page in terms of what we're going to do with this money that appears to be available to us that the governor, um, may or not, may not take away at some point. So, what the administration proposes to council is that we, we jointly resolve to use that money that Senator Ananik spoke about.
Mr. Newsom, would you give the copy?
Absolutely.
Mr. President.
Absolutely.
Mr. President. If I may. So, this is a resolution. This a resolution for six point one million. In light of what I heard Mr. Winfrey say about four point one million, I would want that amended to two million.
He ain't took it yet.
I understand that. But I still want it worded for the four point one and the two. So, I'm getting the amendment and then you saying working together. But that was the criticism I got. Why Maze didn't get with us and tell us nothing? I did. I mentioned it to administrative person. You want me to tell you who? And guess what they said? So, my position is this, I'm finna listen to you. But I shall don't want you coming in here implying we done worked together on this and it's the first I done seen. Now, I ain't, I, 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 I'm finna, I'm, I'm a certain type of guy. I'm a certain type of guy. I ain't been, no had no discussion about this tonight. So, why if I find out in the council meeting, the other folks think they gotta find out from me before council meeting? So, I'm finna listen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Newsom?
So, I'm listening. I'm all in.
What we're presenting, what we're presenting to you all is a, you know, re- a resolution, a couple of resolutions. First, we're saying that we want to tell the governor that he should use, that he should allow us to use that money, that six point one million dollars that Jim Ananik just spoke about, use it to credit these war- these water and sewer bills that are very high. Considering the situation that we have, there are a couple of things that are going on. First of all, we know the deposit closed. We understand that there is a lot of concern in the community, um, because of the, because of the fact that those pods are no longer available. I will reiterate my concern with us using city money, and I'll use it here again, with us using that money to, um, keep the pods open. That money's gonna go away. Okay? The administration has expressed, and continues to express this concern about deposit. Talked about how we can use private money, solicit private money, which is out there. We know Nestle, we know, um, we know celebrities have already said that they will step in and help and we, we can bring that to fruition. Our concern, again, with using state money as well as using local money to do that is, once that money goes, it goes. On a consumable, once it goes, it goes. If we were to work together to solicit private funds, um, whether that be from celebrities, corporations, what have you, to keep the pods open, we can use that, we can let, allow them to do that. We know there's a lot of interest in doing that. Flint still remains in the news. We saw that over the last week. We can, if we can do that, but yet use this money to help residents with their, with their high, um, water and sewer bills, it makes more sense for the city, in our, in our opinion financially. And going back to what Councilwoman Worthing was saying a few minutes ago, you know, what are we doing about people and, and affordability? So, here it is. If we were to bring that money into the water fund, it does help and puts less pressure on, um, on, on us as city government in order to keep that fund alive. And you know, and I'll reiterate it several times to you, the financial situation with the water fund. So, right here, what you have is a couple amendments in front of you. One, specifically to resolve that we compel the governor to use that, to you, allow us to use that money for water credits, for water and sewer credits, excuse me. And then another one to amend the budget to accept that contingent upon, um, the state appropriating that money, releasing that money through the legislative transfer to the city of Flint. So, with that, I'll, um, leave it to Council, Councilman Winfrey. Let me know how you wanna, how you wanna handle this.
Well, I want to, I wanna ask the discussion with, uh, let's see. The first one is Councilman Maze. In this order, Maze, Galloway, Worthing, and you.
Mr. President, I'm gonna yield to, um, Galloway, Worthing, and Fields with it being a yield. Because I'm, I'm, I'm a beach, I'm, I'm so eager to respond to this. But I'm, I'm gonna yield. And then, um, if I can't yield no longer, I'll come back in between here. But right now, I'm yielding, trying to hold my peace till I hear some things, cause I don't like the way this is going down.
Will, 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 will?
Okay.
Mr. President, public comment is appropriate at some time in an open meeting.
Yep, yep. Will, 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 will.
It is. It's a special. I just said it's appropriate at some time, not now.
So, Councilwoman Worthing?
Yes, yes, yes. Okay. I think this is great. But I'm wondering why now? And I'm gonna tell you why, cause for, for all this time.
You wanna have a seat, Mr. Newsom? Cause I, people need to hear this discussion.
I think this is great, but I'm disappointed. And the reason why I'm disappointed is, never once have I even heard the possibility that this twenty-five million dollars would be used for water credits. We've been talking about water credits. People, um, waterlings have been put on their properties. We were fighting with all kinda, you know, talking to Jeff Cherry, saying, please, you know, don't, you know? And so, now that it's come to closing the water pods, money has been minimized, now, like, like, where was this birth at?
Okay, so, a couple of things. Our understanding was that that twenty-five million dollars, and I still haven't gone through the spreadsheet, but our understanding was that twenty-five million dollars was going to be used to keep the pods open. So, we have not had that discussion because it was managed by the state. Now that the water pods are closing and we're learning that six million dollars is left over, that's the reason for the timing. But there's something that's a little bit more compelling here. The fact that we were, we've just been informed that there's a risk that that six million, as Councilman Maze, I think alluded to, um, for that six million could, could be re-appropriated to-
Four point one.
Four point one million, thank you, to be re-appropriated to other purposes that, um, possibly aren't gonna be managed or even, um, help the pe- the people of city of Flint. So, there is a sin- that's the reason for the timing. Uh, you know, I'm hoping I answered your question, but we want to act very quickly now that we're learning all these details, notwithstanding the meeting that took place with the governor earlier today. We wanna act very quickly and send a united message to the governor, um, and to the state that, hey, first of all, don't, you know, we need to have a voice in how that money's going to be used. Um, but also at the same time, we don't want you all paying off some other bills with this money that's supposed to be, that's supposed to be dedicated to us and, uh, you making sure that everybody's able to access water. So, that's the reason for the time.
Now, uh, Mr. Newsom, are you, um, aware of the nine million dollars that, um, are you a, aware of this line items?
So, I have, and I have not had a chance to reconcile their numbers against ours, but ours, but I will say this, as I look through those numbers, um, I will say that, um, that there is been, you know, there is a, um, um, I think it's the same as this, uh, so, it's not many, it's the same.
Point of information. Looked like Mr. Branch wanted to say something.
Yep. Oh, that nine million dollars part of the funds that was used as part of the concern pastors with their service line settlement? Again, now, the money was allocated from the state to cover costs for Flint. So, I hear, you know, aside there, but that's-
So, will you, will you be able to give us some clarity on, like, that's broad? Well, I know that, I, I'm, I'm, I'm clear on that, but what exactly does that settlement include? There should be a, a line, a breakdown of how the nine million dollars were spent.
Eighty-seven million dollar settlement. Forty million of it came from wind monies. Forty million. Forty-seven million the state has to provide. That's nine of the forty-seven million.
Right, but, but to what? What is the, like, the, the-
Make service line replacement.
Oh, so, it's, it's just part of the six thousand that you guys did and so on and so forth?
Right, it's part of the-
So, why was the money separated out? And, and this is the first thing, Steve, respectfully, this is the first time that I wasn't, um, that I'm learning that the pots are different, right? I thought there was already a pot that had it in there. So, now, we're learning that-
The state has to come up with forty-seven million dollars and the state pulls that forty-seven million dollars out of the state's money. They can get it from wherever they have. So, we have no say-so where they pulled the forty-seven million. They're obligated for that.
So, one thing I do wanna, just for the record, I wanna make this, I wanted to look at, you know, take this back and look and bounce it off. Um, because one other thing that's important for you all to note, I'll take you one second, but that forty-seven million can also come from, um, wind and also come from chip as well. So, it's not like the state has to pony up the full forty-seven million. So, there's, this whole issue of, um, all the, there's a difference between them spending forty-seven million and then making forty-seven million available. So, that's what Mr. Branch is talking about. So, it's really eighty-seven million that they had to make available. Um, twenty, they, um, came up with their own to match the EP, the winds twenty million, that's the forty million. And then for the forty-seven million that's left over, that's gonna be a mix of chip money from the fans as well as their money. Plus, maybe it might be a reserve that they pulled from too. So, I don't, I, I'd rather make, give you my presentation and walk you through what that, what that looks like versus-
Their question is gonna be whether or not you can replace that nine million with me and any other money when they economy-
Well, and that's what, and that's what, that's what I was saying, because if, if the governor is having to come up with money and twenty-five minutes million is supposed to be allocated for this community and, and he allocates it to us and says, oh, but by the way, I'm gonna need nine million of that to take care of money that I'm, you see what I'm saying? It just seems confusing. It may not be, but the way that it's being allocated on
This, that's why we want, and that's why I would- I, I would love the opportunity to present, you know, I love presentations. So, I'd love the opportunity to present to you guys, you know, where the nine million fits in with the entire hundred and twenty for wind and, um, the, the eighty-seven that the state's supposed to come with. Let, let me bring that to you, um, hopefully the next one is coming back, we have to do that.
Yeah, I just wanna say it, it sounds great. It's just the timing. And I get the timing, cause the governor is acting weird, but he's been acting weird for two, four, six years. So, I'm, I'm just saying, I, I probably will support it, but I'm concerned about the timing.
Councilwoman Worthing?
So, let me get this straight, cause this is, this is both, both. We allocated money, wind money, to help residents with their water bills.
No, 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 that did not, no, no. Wind money is specifically dedicated to two things. Service line replacement. I'm, actually, that's not, that's mostly true, though. Let me break down and budget some more. Service line replacement, right, so that hundred and twenty million, the first forty was for service line replacement, right? So, that includes going and hydrovacuuming, see if you have copper lines versus lead, digging up the lead pipes and replacing with copper, and then also, um, restoring the street and the curb, like the curb in the yard, if, if whatever, whatever's necessary. So, the first forty million, thank you, thank you. But the next eighty million, okay? Next eighty million of that, we're going to go to the EPA and discuss with them what that's going to be used for. So, just bear with me, right? Because of that eighty, you s- you used the one and a half million already to pay for water optimization study. There was a change, there was a contract with Arcatis that we put, we presented a change order for, um, when you first joined the council, if I remember correctly. We paid Arcatis one point five million dollars to study the feasibility, um, of the water system overall in order to confirm what's necessary to maintain from an operational standpoint also for financial stability. So, now we've got, so I spent forty, one point five. So, that's seventy-eight and a half left over, right? So, you heard the state senator speak and other people speak about this- So, you heard the state senator speak and other people speak about this project plan and M T use plan, because we have not, um, we have to go back and tell, um, the EPA what we intend to use to balance that money for, so that is, let's say, the new I U P, which will walk through how that money's going to be used, okay? So, here's, here's the, here's the caveat to that, I don't know if you got that, but here's the caveat to that. Part of, there's another bucket of money over here, Steve Branch, the actual city administrator, mentioned this whole thing about the forty-seven million dollars the state has to come up with that's left. Remember that first forty I talked about, is part of eighty-seven that, that they had to pony up or provide for service line replacement as part of the, um, concern pastor settlement, right? So, there's forty-seven left that they have to come up with, right? And that could be a combination of their money and chip money. What they have, what could happen is, is also a two million dollar piece that could come from that first bucket I was talking about, that they could use if they needed to pay for all the rest of the service line replacement phase five. This is why it's easier to present it, because it does get a little bit confusing, confusing for, so, so, eh, long story short, long story short, what we're saying is that the state is responsible for, for the last few, the last two phases, which phase five is gonna start really retrospect tomorrow. Phase five starts now, phase six starts, let's say for now, two thousand nineteen, okay? Forty-seven million dollars is required to pay for that. If forty-seven million isn't enough, then ten million dollars gets pulled to subsidize that forty-seven million, okay? So, that's, that's, and so that leaves sixty-eight and a half million left for capital improvement, so, you know, the small main fixes, your tran, your pumping stations, he's not here. And so, there's a whole, there, there are almost two buckets that you have to think that kinda has to interchange. Does it help a little bit?
It will, I, I'll just change for now, uh.
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt, just to clarify, again, none of those pots of money did I say credits. So, the wind money or the money that's left that the state has to pony up because of the concern pastors, none of that money is, is, is being used for credit, some deals.
Point of information, you understand that consent agreement was not just a concern pastor, it was a consent agreement with the city of Flint.
We refer, we refer to it as a consent.
You can refer to it, but it was a consent agreement signed all with by the concern pastors, the city of Flint and A V.
Yes, thank you.
So, it's a consent agreement, and it ain't just a concern pastor, I ain't gonna let them get that wrapped like that, because the consent agreement came to the council, and they said, no financial implications, and so.
That's a planned information.
Called me out of order, but yeah, did you know that? It is a point of information.
Go ahead, Steve, correct.
That's the question, did you know that?
Okay. My concern is this, and I was gonna actually dive into this on Wednesday, is that eighty percent of my calls are about water and water bills, so I already received two today. And, so, there's a mysterious thirteen hundred dollar charge one month, the water department says it's a leak, they do nothing, change nothing, and the next month, it's back down to where it should be. And, and so, then they're asked to call a plumber, which is a cost, and then they don't trust the plumber because they could be wrong. So, I've been dealing with this, and I, I don't want this six million to go to just take away those balances, and then here we are, we still have the same problem, and I'm gonna get millions of more calls of, of bills.
Now, matter of word, it's matter of word.
Yes.
Would you give me thirty seconds, yell to?
Okay.
We can change that order, something league adjustment, he can talk all day long, but we can change league adjustments, by the way.
Well, we have to do something, and that's, uh, I have a special order on Wednesday so that we can come to the bottom of this, because I, I have more to do on council than describe or not be able to describe what the heck is happening with these water bills. So, can we make that six million in a way that's effective and not just taking care of the one-time fees, but that we fix whatever the heck is happening?
So, if I, if I may respond, Council President, I mean, let's not, let's not make decisions for all thirty thousand accounts based on one specific instance, so, let me finish, let me finish. One thing I want you to understand is that, and we just have to investigate, and if we find that there is a leak, there will be a leak adjustment or some adjustment, so it's not like that six million will go because we overinflated the bill, and then we'll, you know, we'll subsidize, subsidize the overinflation. So, I don't want you to get that, the normal process, the Councilman May's rule, this normal process is for us to investigate that, understand what's causing the, the increase in, in water usage or, you know, what's being needed, and then, from there, adjust the bill. So, we would not say, okay, fine, if we find that, you know, it's thirteen hundred, it's thirteen hundred, what I'm hearing is it's not true to thirteen hundred, so we adjust it to whatever they say, six hundred, and then we give a correct, six hundred or whatever we come up with. So, I'm not, don't think that we're going to, we're inflating these accounts, and then we're gonna use credits to, to, um, credits to subsidize that inflation, we're gonna correct it, do correct accounts. But again, going back to what I was saying before, let's not make decisions for thirty thousand accounts based on that particular one. We do need to investigate that, and I know Rob and Ama that have been, um, communicating with you on that, and we, maybe I need to play a larger role with that, but I think that this is a separate conversation.
That's not just one, it's like five or six people that have contacted me, and I've only been on council since November, I've got this mysterious charge, I did nothing, but then the water department doesn't investigate, doesn't do anything, just says you should pay your water bill. And, and that's a huge concern, um, and so, maybe we can use this money to work on a water affordability plan, so that if someone makes seven hundred a month, and their water bill is one to two hundred dollars a month, and this is an example I've encountered today, a disabled senior, uh, we're, I mean, that's, that's too much of her income to be paying for a water bill. So, can we use the six million to, to, to come up with this water affordability plan where they do not pay more than three percent of their income, so that, uh, then we can make up the difference?
So, I specifically put, yeah, and that's, that's exactly why, thank you, City Attorney, and that's why, you know, we made it very clear in the rec, in the resolution that we would propose to you all eligibility processes. So, if you wanna make it income-based, I'm, that's fine, that's why we, the main goal of this resolution was to resolve that we were going to go to the governor and go to the state and say, we want the money for this, and if we want an income-based, uh, eligibility, income-based eligibility, we propose, you all decide, just like we did with the water relief, uh, program for six hundred thirty-three thousand part of the legal, to go up, part of service contract. We came, you, we came, we heard your feedback, we, uh, created a program, and then, from there, we, um, you all resolved and we accepted.
Well, then, I would be happy to do this, and then, we can decide how this money is appropriated.
It's, it's eligibility to be determined.
Point of information, point of information. Do you realize you contradicting yourself? You saying you would be glad to do this if we can decide how the money is decided, and that's the first step before you, we glad to do this, you decide how the money is gonna be spent.
Amen.
And then you get to the detail. So, I hear what you're saying, but I think we need to talk once he finished, that's why I'm yelling, just to see what y'all saying.
So, if, Council President, so if I may respond to that, Councilman May's?
Keep talking to her, I'm gonna respond to you.
Okay, fine, so, if, I think we've built an effective model, what we did originally back in November, December, when we adopted the water service contract, we said, we, let's bring in the six hundred and thirty-three thousand of the state, right? Let's accept that as part of the water service contract that we signed legally. Once we did that, we later iterated, we had a special meeting, the finance department along with administrations recommended an approach, we had an iteration on that, and we resolved on the specifics around eligibility and how that money was going to be allocated. Given that, the fact that we have a model that I think worked, and we all agreed upon, right, that's number one, and also, given the fact that there is a timing issue, I think that this approach.
Point of order, we call, point of order, we call the meeting as dealing with Senator Anan, not nearly on a resolution that could have been brought to city council, and it's starting to piss me off.
Well, Councilman May, I was asked earlier today if this could be done.
Okay, well, then, ask us, ask us, vote on it, if we wanna stop for a point of order to vote, I didn't know this was gonna go like this, and it's starting to piss me off.
Well, I don't wanna piss you off.
Well, I'm telling you why, you know why it's pissing me off? Because I'm not gonna sit here and listen to this man go through something that should be in.
He's asking, he's asking.
Well, then, ask us, ask us, ask us, I'm calling a point of order, because it ain't on here, it ain't on here, and it's, and it, and we got.
Point of order, point of order is when a rule is being broken, what a rule is being broken.
The agenda, don't you, can't you see what I'm saying? Do I have to break it down elementarily? You wanna fight with me, Miss Fields, I said, point of order.
Their all brought in all the time, Mr. Win.
Really, ain't no add-on been brought in, ain't nobody voted and moved, no add-on, so you want me to, I don't care if this feels, if you don't like my point of order, I'm gonna start telling you I don't like what you do, you pissing me off with that bull. You ain't smart enough to see what it is.
Councilman May, you gonna ask, that's the voter, you know, she'll ask if we'll vote on it.
I mean, if you gonna change the agenda, we do that at the beginning of meeting and say, agenda change, now that I'm seeing what this is, and here she making decisions in a.
Watch your hands, please.
I'll watch you, don't sit by me, I'm tired of you trying to act like black folks trying to hurt you, I'll sit down here, now, I'm tired of your mess, Miss Fields, you always think you can talk negative, don't come sit by me no more, I sit there every week with your bull.
You're out of order now.
Yeah, I'm out of order.
Okay, now, you know what?
Yeah, I'm not out of, yeah, I agree, I'm not out of, but I'm pissed because of that bull.
I can't, I can't help back on track.
She out of order when she talking to me.
Now, let's get in order, you have brought up a point, it's not on the, it's not on the agenda.
It's on the miscellaneous, we have a miscellaneous line item.
Where, where?
We said other miscellaneous items.
Where? I'm talking about in the agenda, what we didn't do, I know it was posted, other council business, but make the agenda, you should have public speaking on there as well.
Amen.
Everybody wanna be a G, and it's, this is me off, you think you gonna do something, say something.
And I believe I'm in the queue.
So, it says water issues and other miscellaneous issues, Councilman.
Where?
Other miscellaneous items, yeah.
We done called a order, we done did a roll call, we had question and answer session. I know that, I'm talking about the agenda, so we in question and answer session, question and answer session, that's where we at.
Right.
Okay, we gonna do an agenda change because I said the public get the comment, I thought we'd be sitting out there, it's a special meeting, we ain't never had no special meeting here, I know everybody who maneuvered, and what's being said, Mr. President, all I'm telling you is if you gonna rule and win, rule on this, and we gonna discuss it, carry side vote. But the point is, the point, no, I didn't appeal to ruling, because you ain't ruled, I said, point of order, I'm getting tired of this on and on on something that ain't on the agenda.
Councilman May, and when you said that, I, as you speak, I have.
Because I say all the time that you're being committed.
As you speak and not get interrupted, I have the right to do the same.
That's correct, but I got interrupted by Miss Fields, and it got to the point she went to act like my hands threatening her, and I move, because if you hit a white woman, you're going to the penitentiary.
Now, can we get back to?
I'm so tired of her bull, just, just implying stuff, just ignorant.
Councilman May.
And it's over and over, remember, I'm the most racist person she ever met in her life, she must have lived a sheltered life.
Councilman May, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to.
Okay, well, then, keep them calm down.
Ain't nobody saying nothing.
They did, it's what they say and do that pisses me off, and then they hide, you throw the rock and hide your hand.
Councilman May.
Normally, I'm laughing and joking, I got the message, he gonna get it too, quit that bull, 'cause I wanna cuss.
You can do whatever you want, but it's just not gonna go un, unmet.
I'm, I was inactive before I was a council.
I'm not interested in that.
I'm interested in it.
I'm interested in moving forward, you have said, you said we're out of order, I'm trying to address.
It's going so long, this a committee meeting now.
You, you said that we're out of order, I'm trying to address that, you said that it's not on the agenda, can we get a vote, that's where I'm trying to get now, you said you wanna go back.
I didn't appeal your rule.
I understand, I haven't ruled you.
Right, so, all I'm asking is that this can be a discussion in the appropriate committee, 'cause it's, I see what it is, they done brought a resolution to a special meeting, if y'all think we gonna vote on this? That's what their intent was, bring it and pass it.
Councilman May, here's what we're gonna do, all of us, those of us that are out of order are gonna get in order, uh, I'm gonna ask them to leave. Now, I want you to be here because you represent.
Let me ask this question.
I, I'm not, I'm not gonna be interrupted, I'm not gonna be interrupted.
Remember, I yell, so, since I'm out of order, can I un-yell, answer me that, since I'm gonna show you that I know.
And then, here's what's gonna happen, Councilman May, we're gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this democratically, I'm gonna see if the council, if our colleagues want to have Mr. Newsom to present this, we're gonna do it by vote. Now, it's already on here that, that the, the issues that we're going to discuss, water issues and other miscellaneous items, it's under the meeting agenda.
So, he getting votes, if we, they planning on hearing this and voting on this, resolution has been brought, that's what the plan is, the resume.
Your colleagues have the right to vote.
They sure do, but I didn't know, I, I watched the.
Without any further discussion, on Councilman May's, uh, point of information, uh, point of order, he wants a vote of having Mr. Newsom presenting the resolution, and that's what he says. And so, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make that motion.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
You get a motion.
To have, uh, uh, Mr. Newsom continue.
Nah, yes, the motion you want, I make a motion.
Make a motion.
I make a motion that this is discussed in the appropriate committee, and that this ain't voted on in this special meeting, because I wanna digest it, I'm, let me make the motion first, I move that this go for discussion and action out of the appropriate committee.
Okay, it is been moved, is there a second?
How's second?
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Yeah. Mr. President, the reason I'm, the reason I'm making this.
No, 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 because the motion had been made, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Fields, now, let's, let's, we already got one person out of order, you, how you gonna make a mo, uh, how you gonna get in and the motion?
The motion that's out of order is who?
Go ahead.
Mr. President, the reason I make that motion because it hit me, they done brought a resolution to a special council meeting, in my opinion, facts, and I'm hearing votes lined up, I can vote for it, I ain't even made that decision yet, and that's a premature buy-in with all this talking, that's like discussion on a motion, he having to feel that, and I'm saying to myself, this is a sleek move in a special meeting, a very sleek move, the sum ain't been through committee, I made a motion on a similar front, now, all of a sudden, here they done brought something in slick to discuss and vote for action, and I'm hearing colleagues buying in, I vote for it, I ain't into that, and it was starting to piss me off when I seen the direction I think you was headed, through you to Mr. Newsom, you brought this for vote today, I, see what I'm saying? Ain't that bad? No, I just asked you a question, we in discussion on a motion, you ain't a council person, and that's why I picked up on it, I said, this guy lobbing the council on something he done come for, and I'm hearing him buying in, we finna exhaust that six million the way he want, and ain't discussed it among ourselves. Now, I tabled a motion to send it to the appropriate committee, but this council need to have some discussion on what we wanna use that money for, not just the administration, and then he coming in with credits, credits, so he can get the money in his carter, but then he gonna come in with credit money for his carter, but don't want you to use two million of the same money for water pots. But don't want you to use two million of the same money for water pots. So if he wants you to get an influx to his car for six million. I done sit here and listened to him today and the other day, got a problem with what the people want. If you getting a six million influx, sir, you shouldn't have a problem with a two million dollar temporary expenditure. So I don't even wanna discuss it and vote on it this quick. And that's why I moved that it go to committee like regular. And they still ain't called me. So they wanna prove I'm chopped liver and y'all can try to help them prove it by voting, cause I'm against it. I wasn't with, not Miss Galloway. They right. It's just like the other councils. I didn't mind being on, in the minority. I was in the minority for four years. Couldn't win president, chairman.
The boarder, Mister May, is going way on top.
No, I'm not. I'm, I'm pushing to vote no. I mean, yes, to postpone this. That's on top.
Proceed and then I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up.
Thank you. And then I'm gonna ask again to communicate. Because they didn't, they didn't tell Newsom to proceed and wrap it up. Ain't nobody told nobody I yield to to proceed and wrap it up. And every time this council people's, persons speak. Who is a minority opinion and people jockeying to be cool with everybody. And the talk. Ain't no way the administration shouldn't have told me about this. So everybody who wanna be cool, who knew? Did you know this was coming for action, Mister Day? Did you know Mister Winfrey? Did you know I'm Miss Ga- Galloway? This is coming for action. And it's out of the process for something this big to come straight to council for a vote.
Good thing you're all here.
So.
All right, hold up, hold up, hold up. Just, just a second. Listen, we good.
I apologize for.
Let me tell you something now. We can all, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give the public, uh, their opportunity to try me, but we are not gonna make a circus out of yourself.
We good, we good.
Don't, don't do it again.
So that's where I'm at, Mister, Mister President. And I will wrap it up, but I'm not gonna take no bull off of Kate Fields. Or nobody else when I'm doing points orders. My table off, I'm broke, I'm mad. So I don't come to these council meetings for that mess. I'm gonna be done with all that competing and you ain't on point. Yes, I am on point. And what I was starting to say, Miss Galloway, that's what the other council did. Everybody wanted to politic with Wallin, the mayor, and be on TV. And the point, and the point is. People vote wrong hastily and quick. And then they glad to outvote me. And now some of them gone. And I'm still doing the same thing. Gonna continue to talk about what the people want, how this process work, and I be dark gone. If we slip back into this competing with May's thing as a council, I think I'm gonna win. And Kate, one last, Kate Fields ain't gonna discredit me with her slick. I wanna cuss. Cause it ain't slick.
Okay. I believe this is being presented because Mister Newsom said clearly that there is a fear that the state will try to use. One million to pay off their lawsuit. As we can see in the spreadsheets that were given to us. That the state has used money that was allocated for the use of Flint every six ways to Sunday. And it looks like anything they could remotely charge to the city of Flint appropriation, they charge to it. Regular programs and Mish, uh, Health and Human Services, you know, double bucks. I don't know how that's related to water usage or water crisis, but they've done it. So I think it's very clear that the reason this is, timing is of the essence, is that this six point one million, okay? Can be captured to prevent them from doing that. It's a very wise decision. It's a preemptive strike to keep them from doing that. And this would actually solve many problems. One of our biggest problems as we go through this budget period is our fund balance. If these were allocated to credits, okay, it would solve multiple problems. It would allow us to capture, um, bills that are owing. Okay, which I remind you, it did before. If it's owed, remember that twenty-four million that's owed? I believe it would allow us to capture a good chunk of that. It would also satisfy what Miss Worthing and others are concerned about. Okay, is helping the residents in the city. And from what I've seen of these water pods, these people are coming in from a wessel. Okay, loading up on things of water. This says clearly that there are other, and I believe this is true. We've heard from United Way, we've heard from celebrities, we've heard from churches. They are going to help provide bottled water in the ponds. We have to be smart and use this money in the smartest way that we can. If we do it this way, we keep the state from taking the money. We help shore up our water fund, which is in serious, serious trouble. Uh, we help the least fortunate among us in the city, okay, and we do something long term. And by the way, one question for Mister Newsom quickly. Is, is this also, would this subject be, be subject to the four percent investment interest? Which I calculated is close to two hundred fifty thousand that we could also add to help residents in the city.
I wanna confirm that, but I think so.
Close to two forty-six something, like half the layers. Okay. So this is the smartest thing I've seen. And I really wanna communicate to the city. Once again, Mister Newsom comes in with how to use the money in a smart way. So for that reason, I would like to offer a substitute motion. I would like to move that, we move this, well, it's, we're in a special meeting. Miss Clerk, could I ask a question?
That's a contradictory motion. It can't be a substitute motion. It go up and down. And what she making a motion and asking questions, you know. I already see what she hit.
From a historical standpoint, we have done well on C B O that council needs.
Okay, so for that reason, I would offer, offer a substitute motion that we pass both of these resolutions here now.
I just said it. That motion is improper. It's contradictory. There ain't a substitute.
Explain to her why it's, it probably comes from.
When you make a substitute motion, it takes the original motion and go along with the regular motion, with the original motion. You can't do a contradictory motion on the regular motion. You just voted up and down.
Mister Winfrey, I, I disagree, but I'll do the research on that. I don't have time to do that right now. But you know what I would suggest? I would withdraw my motion and.
Okay, cause the.
And I would suggest. We vote Mister May's motion up or down, and then I'll make a motion on this.
Is there any other discussion?
Is it okay for the public to speak? Because.
They, they're gonna speak before we, before we vote on, on the.
So they wanna speak before we vote on the.
That's fine.
That's what I was just asking. At least the ones that want to.
Then what we'll do, Councilwoman Galloway, once all of the council persons. Speak in on this, get in on this discussion, when I will allow the public to speak as well. Um, so is that, is that it for you, Councilwoman Galloway?
Could you repeat his motion?
Uh, Councilman May, you repeat your motion.
I'm Mister President. She got a point of information. She can ask a point of information and that should be repeated. But when she started howling out and doing with her little cheeky meticulous about me, I'm finna play it to the hip. Cause Jackie Tocker used to do that, come out, raise your hands. And people seen all on TV. I'm used to this mess. Let me say this. Now here she done gave a speech, cause I'm against it. This is the smartest proposal I heard. No, it ain't. The smartest proposal is amending it to four point one million and two million over here. That's smart. The smartest proposal is to go through this like we was doing when I yield before people start agreeing, I vote for it. You ain't even heard the whole council discussing yet. But Miss Fields now all of a sudden administration is smart. If it take me to get five folks to vote, cause I say something else. God bless them. That's the strategy I used to use with the other councils. Miss Field ain't fooling me. She ain't studying the particulars of this resolution. She's done trying to show folks. She can be something different than Eric May. That's my view. This ain't the smartest use of that money. I even been tuned out because I don't even know the proposal right now. But I'm picking up on it. This is six point one million for water credits. Is that's what I'm hearing, Mister President? Six point one million for water credits. All of a sudden it's popping out when I'm talking about this reserve fund for pots. You should have been and applied for six million. This is politics at its best. I'm used to people trying to show May's up, whether it's Newsom, the mayor, Kate Fields, or whoever. It's pissing me off. This didn't magically come at this time. Magically. And this don't stop the governor. From using four point one million and throwing your stuff in the trash. This is a game. Just because we asked for it, don't mean he gonna do it. He might say already, he told Mister Winfrey, told you was nasty, and he gonna use four point one million. For some lawsuit or something. Then you say, Mister Winfrey. So Mister Newsom, I'm not gonna let you and the administration come in here playing games with this council. That's my view. And I think this is a politically timed game on the special meeting that I asked for. For Senator Ananek to talk about this money. And my phone ain't rung. And so that's how I look at it. And if you wanna get serious, today Monday, in two days, the timing is the same. Now, if this motion vote down, watch what's gonna happen when the discussion come to me. Because I yield. I thank it with you, Miss Worthing, and Miss Fields. I heard Miss Worthing say something about, yeah, but. So we gotta get to the yeah buts. That's the amended resolution. Miss Fields trying to sell y'all, this the best thing since sliced bread. You know why? Cause of what Councilman May saying. Personality politics. And I'm so tired of it. I'm for the substance. I'm gonna say this. I'm counting votes, Miss Galloway. I'm gonna count. Winfrey in favor of voting on this today. Fields in favor of voting on this today. She said. Oh, I'm counting votes, Miss Worthing. I don't know where you at. Seem like you wanted amendment, but you might be personally against May's too. Davis, he supports the administration. That's four. It take five. This motion to go to committee can fail, Miss Galloway. It can fail, Miss, uh, Winfrey Carter, because that ain't the cure. It ain't the cure. So if they wanna take action today, then the next motion should be to amend this. Four point one million and two. So don't trip off of me. I done did my thing. I done made my motion to do it the right way. And send it to the committee on Wednesday. You know why? Because Wednesday ain't no different than Monday. Today is Monday. And here they done brought it in a special meeting talking about, we gotta do it, cause what the governor said. The governor said, he knew in his mind, he was gonna spend four point one million of it before they met. They met on Monday. He knew that Friday. This game ain't gonna make the governor say, I'm gonna get a whole six point one million to Flint. He didn't get, wanna get two million. Now all of a sudden, if we show unity and get this six million into the water and sewer fund, cause Newsom said it. He still telling, but I don't wanna let y'all use two million of that for about a while. How selfish is Newsom? Y'all helped me get six point one million, but I'm turning y'all down on the resolution that you and the people want for two point two million. This ain't the best deal since sliced bread. We made that mistake on the thirty-year deal.
Wasn't your.
Wait, 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 wait.
She said point of information.
She gotta go through the.
Um, wasn't your motion for the two million from the general fund?
Yes. That's where the sixteen million is at, to be replaced by this money a week or two later. If you can apply for this money and get it a week or two later, my proposal was use our money, keep the pots open. Remember, they done closed now. Cause I made this on a Monday, knowing they would close on a Tuesday or Wednesday. That's a mute issue. Cause they done closed. The delivery done closed, cause people didn't listen. Who could have, in my opinion, kept them over, whether you talk to the governor, smothering or whatever. They were lined up on Dura Highway. They was lined up on, so that's a mute issue now, keeping the pots open. That's done. That's a mute issue. He blocked it. And others blocked it. With the mayor and others saying, don't do what May say. Let the pots close. In essence, that's what they said. Cause he said. Um, it ain't a guarantee we can get that money. Well, you heard from Ananek, it ain't a guarantee. This six million ain't a guarantee. But all of a sudden, Kate, oh, it's the best thing since sliced bread. It's brilliant. Well, it ain't that brilliant. It's fooling y'all. Cause the governor ain't gonna do this. I ain't gotta do it. Not if he wanna spend four point million, four point one million. You think he was lying and hurting them when they went up there today? This a game. The best thing you could do is amend it. Two million, four point one million. That's the amendment to even this resolution. So I'm saying, I can't wait to talk about this. And they made me so mad the way they done did this. I move that it go to committee and we discuss it the right way. But this might be the best time, cause everybody ain't in committee. People leave. So I'm gonna be voting up. And every indication I read in this small meeting, Jerrain here, Briggs ain't here. Four votes, it fails. And I sure wanted to. I don't care if it fails, because it's gonna come back with amendment. But I have to stop what I seen was going on. This guy fooling y'all.
I have a question. I wanna know, we don't have to. Or, we don't have to do the resolution to amend the budgets without first doing the resolution to request the money. So in essence, we could approve one and table another and see if this is accepted or not. I will say for the record, um, I do not want Governor Snyder to spend the money. And so I will support the motion. I do believe that everything is political as much, you know, it, 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 the timing is great. We look, not we, but it looks like the perfect answer. I'm gonna say again, we should have, if we knew that this money could be allocated for water credits. We shouldn't have been worried about waiting for Governor Snyder to possibly not give us the money. We should have been looking at those options already. But again, I'm gonna support this, this motion, cause I don't want him to spend it. I don't know if he's gonna say yes or no. But we should have been having that discussion early on, even before this. And when we look at how we allocate this. As much as I am in favor of those that are struggling with their water bills, there needs to be some reparation for people that have paid their water bills. I have a lot of seniors that have a limited amount of money, and they have consistently paid their water bills. And they should see some relief as well. I just wanna make sure I say that.
If I may, I just wanna respond. I think that, again, the way we wrote it was.
Mister President. So that. Point of order. Now, I know we in discussion on a motion, but do you know if I could. Now, I know we in discussion on a motion, but do you know if I could respond every time somebody talked on a motion? I could win a lot of them. We in council discussion.
So, you don't want council...
He can. I ain't got a problem with it, but I just want you to understand the point of order. I ain't against him responding, but if he respond every time we talk on discussion of a motion, I could win. I know, I know, and I ain't against it. I'm just saying the point of order. Cause if you give me that opportunity, I can sway folks every time, back and forth. But anyway, I ain't opposed to it, but just so you know.
Uh, and I'm not a politician, and trust me, I don't want to be a politician. The way I look at it is very simple. Yes. The way I look at it is very simple. If we have heard wind of, um, this six point one million dollars, it's no longer, it's not gonna be used for three months of pots, right? We know that's the case. There's no, there's no debate in that. So, we're saying is, we need to come and, you know, and give the govern, governor a strong signal that we want to have determination of how the money's gonna be used. In my mind, and in the mind of the administration, it makes more sense for us to look at water affordability, as Councilwoman Worthing has said, or whatever it is. But the main thing is, we need to give something to, to Governor Snyder very quickly. This is in the news. I'm sure you heard the press conference earlier today, and what the mayor's, and what the mayor's saying. So, right now, it is very important for us to keep, you know, to keep pressure on the state, resolve very quickly. This is our money. We're gonna dictate how it's gonna be used. You're not gonna get, you're not gonna slide out and give us this money. So, again, the way we wrote, and then this, using it this way provides lasting support for the residents of, of the city of Flint. So, going back to, you know, again, I like the term affordability. We can help residents predict how we, we, we want you all to make that final determination on eligibility. The main thing is, right now, we're resolving that we want to use this money to support residents in terms of their water and sewer bills that have struggled through this, uh, struggled through this water crisis. So, that's the point of the timing and the means to do it now.
And President Winfrey, I just...
Point of emphasis.
What's your point, President?
So, you telling this council, we gonna dictate the spending of that money?
I'm telling the council, we resolving, we're sitting up, we, we, this is a request. We need the resolution. It's to make a request.
Into a serious body. You said, "We gonna dictate."
President Winfrey, were you a part of the drafting of this?
No.
Okay. And the only reason why I ask is, in, in the past, when resolutions have come from the council, there's a lot of different things that have to take place. And so, I just knew that you were part of the, um, meeting, and I was wondering if you were... Right. I didn't know if you were a part of drafting this meeting.
Once everybody gets done, I'll explain how this thing unfolded and...
But so, can we do one and not the other?
I think, if, if you can do one and not the other, I think the budget amendment can wait. I think the budget amendment can wait. However, I think the original resolution is to make that...
You can.
You tore it out the way?
Oh.
Councilwoman Worthing, you, you all...
Mr. President.
You tore it out the way?
Uh, the one with that six point...
Oh.
Mr. President.
But you know what? My, my question was closer, because I wanted to know if we can vote on, it's gonna be separate, right?
Okay.
So, it's the one where you're recommending to Governor Snyder?
Right. That's the one, that's for sure, that one. We can table the budget amendment.
Mr. President.
Wait a minute. I got, I got some folks in line, Councilman May.
And I just want to say, yeah, I want, I want us to have, um, our six million dollars, our six point million dollars. So, right now, I don't know, I need to, I'm not ready to vote on, um, the usage of the six point one million dollars. But I would, um, definitely vote to, to get our, the money in our hands. Point of information. Does the amendment that we're, um, considering, the recommendation of Governor Snyder, it has embodied in it how the money will be spent? So, technically, are we bound by even the amendment when it comes, when we vote, because of how this is saying? Instead of just saying, "We recommend that Governor Snyder allow us to choose how we're gonna use the money."
So, my understanding, and I'll also allow Councilwoman Worthing to chime in as well, for the few that can talk about this out of the room. But my understanding is, is that it would, it would be stronger, a stronger signal if we were to say that exactly how we intend to use it. Because remember, this is a recommendation. To say, "We just want the money," and not talk about the usage is, um, is, is a little tougher to push through versus specifically stating, "This is what we intend to use the money for."
Transition, I want to know which one's the one.
Mr. President, are we still waiting? I'm still waiting.
We still, we still, uh, in discussion, uh, Councilwoman Galloway.
Call a question.
I can see, she can't come in the room and be before me.
Isn't the motion on the floor to postpone both the...
She gonna come in the room and be before me, yeah.
No, that's not, that's not the motion on the floor.
She just walked in the room.
Clarify. Please, please clarify the motion. I withdraw that if I know what the motion is.
Well, Councilman May's motion was to...
She been trying to be recognized. She wasn't here.
I'm trying to tell her what the motion was.
Right.
Councilman May's motion was to send this to the committee.
And we said, "Hey, Councilman."
She wasn't here.
Okay. And I left for twenty minutes. I came back.
Doesn't matter how long you were doing it.
That's mine. And I'm calling a question.
It has to be supported?
Yes.
I support that. Oh.
Come on. Well, we gonna vote it down. We are voting down. We are...
It's been moved. It's been moved. It's supported.
And it's making news.
Council clerk, vote for it.
Some people...
Call the question.
Get, get it on, actually. Point of information.
Why do we have to talk about, just to vote?
No. Point of information. If we, if, if the, um, call for the question is approved, we get enough votes, then we automatically vote on the motion.
We'll vote on the questions.
Right, but no. Once we vote on the question, if it is, passes, then we automatically go to the vote on the motion on the floor.
Correct.
Which doesn't allow for the public to get the opportunity to speak. Am I correct? I just want to make sure. I, I just wanted to, I just wanted to, okay. I didn't want to, I was clarifying.
I, I, I withdraw my second.
Okay.
Same with clerk.
Yes, you can.
Oh, because it's already been reached.
She can withdraw her second. She withdraw her second.
I thought we could call the question. We vote on heads and continue.
Council clerk, roll call.
This is on the call for the question. Mr. May?
No.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
No.
Ms. Galloway?
No.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Didn't make...
Okay, it's three to three.
I would just say to hell with discussion. Mr. Not a President, Mr. President, Mr. President. Is it appropriate not for me to have a floor? If it is?
Yes, it is appropriate now. You don't have a floor anymore.
I never spoke.
Can't help it. You, we, that's a done deal.
Mr. President, I ain't gonna call for the question. She can speak. But Mr. Newsom there, they're saying, "We decide." And that's my point. We ain't decided nothing. They done decided, and they bringing it to us for approval. I want to discuss about this six point one million, and he's saying, "We can send a message." But Mr. Ananik just told me, "That's the governor's call and the legislature's." And normally, it's the governor's call. And the governor told you, from what you told me, four point one million was gonna be used for some...
For the education settlement.
Yeah. And so, I'm telling you, this the time to talk about it. And if you want to send that message, remember, listen, folks. Ms. Field said, "I want to do a substitute motion to not do this." Substitute motion has to be compatible. A substitute motion can be made on this to bring four point one million in for water credit, and another two point, another two million for the discretion of the council and anybody else, but they want to know what we gonna do. The problem I got with Mr. Newsom giving him my rubber stamp is because every time we done asked him for two million, he don't want to let it go. But he need our vote to get six million. And we, in school, we, if, if you keep giving people something, they don't give you nothing. That's foolishness. Now, he wasn't even expecting this six million in the water and sewer fund, telling us about deficits, vacancies, cause now here he coming up, vote for this six million. The hell with what May's talking about. And she, and Kate Fields loving it, so she done teamed up with him. You see how that call for the question went? It wasn't the right thing to vote yes on her when we done see out the room and we told the public they can speak. Damn it. That shouldn't have never passed in principle, cause we had already made an agreement. You gotta watch these slick maneuvers. And if I don't put them out there, I ain't mad at y'all, cause everybody can vote the way they want. But people looking at what we do. Mr. Newsom and people recommending this six point one million. Ms. Galloway, right. Why did they didn't recommend it? You know how long I've been talking about this twenty-five million? Since we was voting on the thirty-year deal with Gilead. Money been sitting there at our discretion. You know how many people complain about them credits? We need more credits. All of a sudden now, after I bring a proposal to keep the pots open and talk about this twenty-five million, somebody get the bright idea now. That's politics. Cause they been saying, "Why May's didn't tell nobody what he was doing?" I did. I told Gil. That's what he said. You know how close Watson, Newsom watched that money? I say, "Newsom worked for us." So, don't let nobody tell you. I didn't tell nobody. I told you didn't. I only can talk to one council person on one subject matter. I don't talk to three, four, and five. That's what Kincaid them used to do, round robbins. I told you the details of the proposal of the two million, and told Mr. Gilchrist. And his response was, "You know, Newsom watched that money." Yeah, Rich Bad sent him here, or recommended him. That's what he, did he through, hey, did, did, did Rich Bad recommend you, since it's so doggone funny? Do you know whether he recommended you?
Councilman May.
I'm asking.
That, that is so unfair.
Is it irrelevant? Is it irrelevant? Since it's so funny? Is it relevant?
You know it. You know it.
Through you to Mr. Our Mad Man. Did Rich Bad recommend you to come here? Since you turning around, looking at people laughing, you don't know me yet. Is it that funny?
Councilman May.
Okay, then why it is un, is it, is it the truth? Is it the truth?
Councilman May, we already know.
Is it the truth?
Point of order.
Since you want to tell me it's unfair. Is it true?
This meaning.
It's unfair that y'all keep blowing behind my back and ain't talking. That's what's unfair to me. On two and six million dollars worth of records and taxes and water credit.
You gotta let us speak.
This is devolved.
You're destroying the order. She can leave, but tell her to be quiet when she leave. I ask a fair question. When people want to laugh and come in these meetings and politic to vote?
This is totally unprofessional.
Sneak around.
You unprofessional. So, unprofessional, you're about.
Councilman May, please stop to the...
I am sticking to it. When have you known Ms. Fields running with Newsom then? This a game.
Let's just, let's just choose.
I am sticking to it, but I want to ask a question. Why my phone ain't rung? Now, now, what was unfair when they was putting out in the street, I hadn't told nobody. I talked to Jerry Winfrey Carter, and I talked to Mr. Gilchrist. See, I'm the type person, I don't let people tell falsehoods on me. I'm getting calls from Pastor Flynn. I'm getting talk to Pastor Harris. I'm hearing Dumas and over to them on the radio. This is a big thing. And so, he can say it's unfair, but you in a game of politics. You better tell those folks to quit telling people lies that I didn't talk to nobody. It's a lie. And so, what I'm telling you is this. I'm gonna keep it professional too. So, it can blow up, but when I'm in here talking in these council meetings, you can look back at Angela and laugh if you want to.
He didn't do that.
Yeah, he can do that. Mr. President, is what she talking about?
He didn't do that.
I seen it. Yes, he did. Quit lying.
No, he did not.
I gotta pick my grandbabies.
So, when it break up, uh, form this over.
Well, y'all gonna do the public like that, right now. So, y'all gonna do the public like that, right now.
Y'all, I told you after the last meeting.
Presented by Spectacle Productions. And underwritten in part by the Flint Pipe Fitters Union, looking for pipe fitters apprentices throughout Flint. With more information available by calling eight one zero seven two zero five two four three, or online at localthree seventy dot com. Join us at WFOV for rebroadcast and simulcast of city council and other government meetings. Ninety-two point one LP FM Flint.